Order, I'll read the suggested disclaimer. In accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Information and connection links to the meeting are provided on the town of Plymouth's website at Plymouth-NH.org. Okay, so I will read the role once I find me again. Okay. Carl.
President.
Mary Ann.
Here.
John.
Present.
Mark?
Present.
Hey, and I am here. Hopefully Phil will show up at some point. Let's move the minute review to the end since we have our applicant on the phone. How many of you were here at the last time Mr. Carter came and presented? Do we have a number of people that were here?
Yes.
And Jules, you were there too? I was not at that meeting, so I didn't, I wasn't, didn't hear the conversation about the completeness of the application. Okay, so. I will look at the agenda again. So we're going to jump right into a site plan review from Joseph Carter. To develop a 5.04 acre site into 19 camping lots at PID number 213-028. This plan includes a provision for a Riverwalk Trail. Okay, and it's in the agriculture zone. So the way this works. We have a new board member, so I'll just introduce this process. We will hear the applicant present about the completeness of the application. And then we will make a ruling on whether the application is complete or not. And if it is, we will move forward. Further questions from the board discussion. And if we feel like we need to make a ruling tonight, or if we can make a ruling tonight, we will. If not, we will continue it to another hearing. All right, so Mr. Carter, do you want to give us a presentation of your project? Thinking specifically about how it applies to all the site plan regulations and the checklist in the application?
If you want to go back through that, I thought we went over that before. But I was going to say that I took the.
Hang on one second. One second, Mr. Carter, hang on, Jules.
Madam Chair, um, do you need to look at the, accept the application? Review the application and accept it? That's where we were left, we left off last time.
It was not accepted as complete, so we need to do that.
Yeah, so, so if the site, we can, the application is there in the drive. Can review it.
Okay, do you want me to stop?
Hang on, hang on one second, Jules, I'm, I'm confused here. Where, where do we, I mean, this is just a normal, do we do this any differently than we normally would? Or is this, I mean, we've been.
Yeah, I mean, I think the procedure is to take a look at the application, review it, and then accept it. Is it accepted as complete? And then move on to site plan review.
Okay, I'm going through the way we've always done it. Do you have any applicant present on the, the application itself? And then, so it kind of represents a change in how we've done it for a while. I mean, I'm open to that, but we should maybe talk about it during a work session so we get our procedure.
Okay, yeah, I was just reviewing the procedure because of what happened. But go ahead, I won't interrupt.
Because of what happened at the last meeting?
Well, it, I don't want to interrupt, go ahead, Madam Chair.
I just want to make sure, I would like folks to jump in because I wasn't here for the last meeting. So if there's something that I'm missing, please, I just noticed Phil is here as well. Hi, Phil. If I'm missing something that we should be jumping to a different, something else? We just have a new board member who hasn't sat through a public hearing before or this application. So I'm just, I'm assuming we're kind of moving forward on this as a, as a new application since it has not been accepted. Does that make sense?
Right, oh, forgive my, my assumptions. We had some conceptual meetings with Mr. Carter where we didn't really need to accept his application. But he was, since he was rejected last time per se because of the incompleteness of his application. It may be proper to take a look at his application and then vote to accept. And then, that's how you would do it. And then move on to site plan review, review his site plan. Because the last time, you know, the last few times he was doing a design review. So we didn't really have an application.
Okay, so, Mr. Carter, would you like to go ahead and introduce your project to the board? And we will. And board members, please interrupt me and, you know, change this. What we've normally done is we have the applicant present about the projects. We get a basic idea, we look through the application, look through any waivers that the applicant might be asking for and making sure that everything we're asking for in the application is indeed on the plans. So.
Do you, do you want me to read each one of the items that are on there? They're all marked that they're on the plan. I didn't ask for any waivers. I'm just going through it quick now. I hadn't expected to go through it because I had your minutes of your last meeting. And you pointed out that the site plan requirements state that certain details be shown, such as the location of the gate, which I've done. Proposed landscaping I've done with the changes. Detail of the seasonal use I included in my last submittal to you people. The proposed lease, which spells out everything, which is seasonal. Location of the welder on the plan, or the well easement, septic is on the plan. Signage, I gave you a copy of the sign. Plus show where it's going to be on the property, which meets with your zoning requirement. The lighting is shown, dumpster is shown. Building location and elevation, and I gave you a separate plan of the building floor plan and a side view. And the floodproof design and the erosion control plan are on the latest submittal. It should have been delivered to you, I delivered it. So I don't know whether you got it or not, but I did deliver it to your office. You should have a new plan on the right-hand side marked Baker River Drive proposed construction erosion control plan. And the legend with it, and the legend off on the right. And I did mark the lighting and the landscaping. And they're all downcast lighting, so they won't interfere with the, I gave a copy also of the spec sheet from the lighting company. I shouldn't interfere with the airport. And I think I've done about everything you've asked me for, and I haven't asked for any waivers. And I also have a new entrance, which is a smaller entrance that Mr. Tran from DOT asked for, which I've shown. And I think it's just a matter of writing up the entrance. Other than that, I don't know what else I could add to the plan.
Okay, no, that's helpful. Is the new entrance on the, the plans that you gave?
Yes, that's all I, you have new plan. Showing it in red, all the changes are additions. And I would like to point out that, as I had originally, I've tried to follow the contours of the land so there'd be minimal change to the land. I've shown it as a 24-foot gravel, a stone drive. And, and the drainage. Let's see, and I've shown the sign on there. And the new entrance is with a WB15 template, which is what he asked for. And it makes it smaller, it saved me a lot of work and a lot of erosion, a lot of fill. And I've shown also a silt trap, a temporary silt trap. It's on that first sheet, which would be, the biggest change is the entrance coming in because of the shot drop. Other than that, from that drain, as you'll see about 170 feet in, it's pretty well followed the contours within a foot.
Okay. Questions from the board about any of the items that Mr. Carter just outlined? But specifically about the completeness of this application?
You want to go through the application?
No, 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 I'm asking the board if they have any questions about the completeness of your application.
Okay.
For those of you that were here the last time, did the, does it? Everything that was not marked, I mean, I looked through the checklist and it looks like everything's there. Actually, I do have one question before I throw it to the rest of the board. Are we looking at a site plan review for both lots?
No, just one, the, the 19 camp lots.
Okay. All right. Okay, so questions from the board regarding the completeness of this application? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to accept this application as complete?
I just have one thing. I, it sounds like Mr. Carter went through his list of items that we asked him to complete. He listed everything to the best of my recollection. The one thing I didn't see on the plans, we had a question about the dumpster placement, and maybe I just can't see it on the plans, but can you maybe?
It was in pencil and it was probably pretty late. It was on the, where they get the sheet two to blow up. It's not on the first sheet. Which is the erosion control sheet and the, that's on the, that's on a very small scale plan, the 50 scale, the first sheet. And so the second sheet is the, that's, that's on a 30 scale, much larger scale. And that goes up to a mass line, which is just about the property line across the street. It's up, if you get on sheet three. And you see the 24 by 42 service building, which is up on the hill, right up at the corner. And if you follow the property line on the right, up to the corner. It's very light, it's in a 10 feet from the service building. Cut off that driveway, it's probably kind of light. So they tried to, the red brought out all of every black, that was in pencil. There, there will be a dumpster, which is shown on that very lightly. Mine's probably darker than yours, I don't know, but it would be 10 feet from the building. Which I think is the fire law.
And, and my other question, you mentioned changing the entryways. Is the only major change just the width of the drive?
Right, the radiuses are the same. It's shown in red on the, very clear on the first sheet. I left the old ones in so you could see them, but if the radius is 30, it's just that it's moved in to the 24-foot actual way. And I proposed a bituminous concrete down that slope because it's a steep entrance, to right through the drain. See the drain, the 18-inch CMP down about there? It says bituminous concrete to 1 plus 70. Right in the roadway. Yeah, it's, it's the same radiuses, but they've been moved in from the 50-foot right away to the 24-foot actual entranceway. I had, I originally had that 50 feet because we had three lots, if you remember right. We had to have a 50-foot strip all the way down. And we dropped it to two lots without that 50-foot going to the rear.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions about the completeness of this application?
I have, I do have a quick question. Mr. Carter, it, the, I apologize if this seems redundant, but the plant, that it's a little hard to see all of the detail on the plan. Would you mind, do you have a rough idea? Can you share with us where you're proposing lighting? Can you just kind of talk through where we'd find that on the sheet?
I have, I have an application in with a electric company. And I've shown the lighting on the, on the first and second, second and third sheet. If you look on the second sheet, on the 30 scale, the large scale plan. I show the, the first light is at almost 200 feet in. You see it on the right, that's in red, says lighting, shows like a, that's the pole and the light. And look again, there's another one up there at probably 400 feet up. You can see if that's four in the street, four plus, that's the next light. And I've shown the trees also, the 50-foot interval, which is the asterisk. There's a legend over on the right, on the left. And on that, on that sheet, I show that, there's the one at the four. And there's another one up at, well, it's lot, lot six. Uh, six, Station Six, yeah. Station Six is another light. And each side of it, about 50 feet apart, you can see the light, the, there'll be a tree of an inch and a half caliber, which is in the legend. And the last one is, it's the end of the cul-de-sac, right by the, the walkway that would go down to the ramp. Did you find them all?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, sir.
Other questions from the board? Jules, I'm assuming you've gone through this and, in your opinion, this is complete? And that the erosion control plan meets the standard that we expect? Sorry, that was me asking a question and then trailing off.
I looked at it somewhat, I went through the checklist that's on the site plan application, and it seemed to meet their criteria. I looked into floodplain, some of the floodplain stuff, but I really, to be honest, didn't go into great depth about it.
Rebecca, willing to entertain a motion at this time?
Oh yeah, of course.
I'll move that we accept the application as complete.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I will read the role. Carl.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Mark. Phil. And I for me as well. Okay, so the application is complete, we will move on to the site plan review and the public hearing portion of the evening. Is there any more details that aren't completeness related that come from the board on this? We all, we all good? I can open this up for a public hearing, looks like we've got one person here. Yeah, so I will, so we will, I'll open this up to a public hearing in a little bit. Looks like we have one person participating. When, in just one moment when I open it up, I will just ask the person who is here to, to go ahead and state their name, where they're from, and make their comment. Since we don't have a ton of people here, we don't need to limit the time. So it is 6:50 and I'm opening the public hearing. So, Longview if you want, if you want to participate, pop on and do so. If not, we'll wait in awkward silence until.
Um, yeah, I guess, my name's Nate Everts, owner of Longview Farm. And in a butter to this proposal. Yeah, I guess the only questions we have would pertain to just the septic for these proposed sites and where that would go. We've had a hard time kind of deciphering the plans here and curious about that.
Could I respond to that?
Mr. Carter, can you, can you answer? And Jules, I don't know if you can share the screen so we can all get a sense of, because I'm having a hard time seeing the plans as well. So, it'd be helpful. So go ahead, Mr. Carter.
Okay, if you go to sheet three, which is, I hope is in red, like mine is, I had them all made colored staples. It shows where each pedestal will be between this. And there goes right down through to the bottom of the cul-de-sac and around back up to. It's right at lot eight, seven and eight, you'll see a pump station. There's going to be gravity both ways down through the pump station, which is at seven and eight, which is, is far, but far away from the river as you can get. That pumps up, see it says Forest Main, if you follow it from the pump station, it says Forest Main with arrows in red. And it goes around the front of the service building, and it'll also pick up the service building. And it'll go up to that way up at, you'll see 4,000 feet, 4,000 square foot leaching chambers in the distribution box, can you see that? It's almost at the, it's almost at the bottom right of the plan, right about in the middle, on the, right on the property line. You see where there's 4,000 square feet leaching chambers for the distribution box. That's the highest point on the property. And it's almost above the 100-year flood level by a foot.
Just below the match line for sheet two where it says 480, it's the, on the 486-foot contour line?
That's it, right. Right up against the, it shows the tree line and it shows 4,000 square feet. Those are chambers, concrete chambers, admiration chambers. And they hold about three times what pipes hold. And by the way, if that's going to drain, is, yeah, the Whitland scientists did perk test, tested it for two days. And the perk rate is two minutes per inch. And where at least, I was just looking at the plan, it, they were 500 feet from the river.
And so that, that the chambers thing, that is up against the setback line, is that right?
That's, the chambers are 15 feet off the line.
Okay, so that's the setback there. All right. Nate, did that answer your, your question?
Um, yeah, I guess we're trying to make sense of it. So I guess what happens in the event? I mean, most of these sites seem to be like they would be prone to flooding. And I'm just curious as to like protocols for this system, what is done, you know, to help mitigate, you know, sewage going into the river? And I guess on top of that as well, what kind of protocols in this development, you know, would be there, you know, if there's going to be, the river's going to crest and flood? How do we get, you know, all the campers and stuff out of there to make sure, you know, just trying to minimize, minimize waste and stuff that would go into the Baker from this.
Could I answer that?
Sure.
Yeah, I want to point out that it's, the river that I know of today has never flooded up above that bottom, the seven-foot level. That, that when you say flood level, that's a 100-year storm, which would, if it's not a storm, actually, it's the river being backed up because of ice. At first, all of these campers will be out of here, they're only in here for six months. And the flood season is usually, almost always, that I know of, and I think you'll find it on record, it's in the spring when the ice melts and snow melts. And if there's any ice blockage, the river comes up. Other than that, the river is adequate. And the site, Whitland scientists looked for any evidence of fill down in that lower level where the, where the lot is, where we go down to the water. There was no, in his report, there was no evidence of fill of ever being flooded up that high. And all the systems are above that. And there's no discharge of systems until you get up way on this hill, 500 feet from the river. So I, I don't see any, but secondly, we are going to the DES with this design. And they have to review it and approve it. And it can't be that it'll flood, it's way up as high as you can get. And if this, if this flooded to the 100-year flood level, you'd be underwater all the, all the way down through the city.
So I, I think I can answer that too, that we defer to DES for the septic regulations. So that's permitted by them. And any of, the Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act is going to be determining what can and can't be done along the shoreline. So, and then we have the regulation, the environmentally sensitive zone, which is 500 feet from the, back from the river, that really just dictates what, how fill is handled. That's F-I-L-L, don't get confused with our planning board member, but. Yeah, so, so that, we're looking to that for our regulations to protect against that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I'm certainly, certainly you are, and I'm certain that the state will be also. The state has to review all of this and make any, any changes that have been made or disapprove it.
Phil, did you have something to say?
I have a question, but we're still in public hearing, so I don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I, I do have a question regarding the septic and sewer in the area.
Hey Nate, do you have more questions? Or are you okay if, or you can ask more questions now, or we can stay on, on septic?
Um, yeah, I'm fine with just staying on septic.
Go ahead, Phil.
So, um, one of the things I learned yesterday is that the town's water and sewer system is in the vicinity, at least on the north, south side of Tenny Mountain Highway. I'm wondering, have, have you, Mr. Carter, have you consulted with the water and sewer department? Or Juliette, do you know, is there a requirement that he, that any new services connect to sewer in that area? Or is that an option?
I, if I could respond to that? I checked, I checked with the water and sewer department, and there's no way I can connect. It's, it's on a pump station on the other side and I'm not available.
And I also did mention it to Don Jutton, and he was, said it was a no-go.
Okay.
Yeah, and Don did, Don did say yesterday that anything on the north side of the highway is, it just involves a lot of, I mean, we both sat through the whole meeting, but for the rest of the board. It's because the sewer line is running on the south side of Tenny Mountain Highway. It's not like it's an easy hookup through the highway. The developers would be responsible for everything from the connection to the property, so under the highway and all that. So it becomes fairly prohibitive, unless you're doing a phased development such as Riverside Landing.
Okay.
Actually, it's add to what you're saying is it ends before the Brook, Mill Brook, and goes up from there. So you have to cross the Brook too.
It goes up Yeton Road?
Goes up Yeton Road, I thought, yeah, it goes up Yeton Road.
But the only reason I asked is that, you know, I know that if you've already got a pump station in to pump up to the leach field. I didn't know if it would be easier for you, and I didn't know if you had explored, Mr. Carter, I didn't know if you had explored the option of pumping to the sewer line as opposed to pumping to a leach, you know, an onsite system. But, you know, if you've talked to water and sewer about it, and they're happy with this plan, I feel confident that that's, it's, it's a good solution.
Nate, did you have any more questions or comments?
Um, I guess the only other thing that was kind of on my mind is I know that this is zoned agriculturally, and I'm just not entirely familiar. We moved, you know, to Plymouth, you know, in May. What has to happen to, you know, essentially change the zoning, you know, of this piece for development? Not.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question. The.
Can I answer that one?
Nope, I think this is a question for the, for the board.
Oh, okay.
So this is, agricultural is the name of the zone. It doesn't, the name of the zone really doesn't do anything except, I mean, we could call it Zone B, and nothing would change. It's really about what uses are permitted, what uses aren't, setbacks, density requirements or allowed density. So the zone won't necessarily, that, that zone doesn't change with a change of use. So, although we are in the process of changing, ideally, changing our zoning. So we've got a proposal. So we've got a proposal, um, that would actually change the entire agricultural zone. We changed to a zone called rural. And then we're going to talk further about that, but, um, but that doesn't exclude agriculture by changing the name in the same way that, um, you know, Market Basket is in the agricultural zone, so. All right, I see that Nate, you're on mute, so I'm assuming you're done. If not, pop back on. Otherwise, I don't see any other folks from the public. So it's 7:02 and I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Further questions and discussion from the board?
No.
Yeah, I feel like this is, it's a, you know, a good size application with a lot of moving parts. If we were to go forward with an approval, we'd certainly want to put on that boilerplate of conditional approval for, with all state, federal, local permits required. And that's something we do with all applications, but, um, would love to hear some other voices here, especially, um, you know, folks that have been, we got a couple new, very new members and then some people who've been on the board for a little while. So I'd love to hear some more thoughts and ideas, any questions, what we need to know before we move forward?
My only question is, would it be an inconvenience to Mr. Carter if we tabled this so that the board would have an opportunity to do the plans in person at the town hall at some point? We, we do have scanned images available to us, but the, the, it's not quite the same as seeing them in person. Could we, would Mr. Carter be amenable to continuing the hearing to our next meeting?
Could I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, it would be an inconvenience because you'll have, until I get all federal, state and local permits, it's not an approved plan. It's actually, I'm asking you to approve the concept. And everything has to be cleared. It's going to take me till spring to get this through, the, the state, federal and the local. And we could post it, but I, if I could, I would like to get just approval subject to all permits. If the concept is what you think you'd like to see there, and I think I've gone a long ways to putting in everything you've asked for. And I'm also giving a piece of land, it's an easement now. Out right here, you've got enough room to park 16 cars and the river walk right down through. So I would like to be able to go in to the DES because it's going to take a long. I want to work on this this spring after the snow is out. So if I had the approval by then, I could work on it. If I wait till spring, I've only got about a three, four, three or four month work period in the, in the summer. So it, I would like to have it approved subject to all state and local permits.
So any approval we give is going to be subject to those. And we need to approve actual plans. We can't be approving concepts, which is why we've gone back and forth for so long to get, you know, establish things on the plan.
Right.
And we are encouraged by the state to not make hasty decisions as a planning board. So we need to, I think, um, I know that, I think Phil's suggestion is great. I, I think I could stand, it's difficult to see the, um, the scanned plans, especially with the handwriting on there. We've got some new planning board members and I think it would be helpful for them to be able to see that. Jules, is the, can we get into the town hall by appointment to be able to look at plans? Is that possible?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. Um, and we do have a public hearing for our zoning change coming up on, um, our first meeting in, next month is January. But I would be willing, and this is not something we always do, but I'd be willing to continue this to a date certain of, I think it's the fourth of January, so it would just be, that's just, my gosh, that's only two weeks from now, so, um.
Oh, okay. I thought you wanted to be till spring or something. Oh, you're just talking about January.
No, we're on a, we've accepted your application as complete. We have, what, 90 days? We have a, we have a timeline where we have to issue you a decision legally because we've now accepted your application as complete, so.
This seventh of January is the next one.
Seven? Uh, I would, I would move that we continue the hearing until January 7th at our next public hearing.
A second. Thank you. Any, any further discussion?
Sorry, who, who seconded that?
I did, Jules, Mary Ann.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I, I would like to thank Mr. Carter for his willingness and, and the revisions to make the plan complete. I think we did have a productive discussion at our last meeting. And it, it was a fruitful discussion in that there's a lot of new information on the plan. I had the benefit of having the, the real plans in front of me at the last meeting. And I, you know, after having seen the full, full-size plans, I'd, I'd like to have the opportunity to see them again in person at the town hall. So that was, that was the basis for my motion.
Thanks for making that. And yes, uh, thanks for your flexibility, Mr. Carter. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion from the board? All right, um, I will read the roll. Motion is to continue this to the seventh of January. Carl?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And I for me. All right, thank you, Mr. Carter. We will, so if all the board members can make a point, make an appointment to go down to look at the plans sometime in the next two weeks. Is it just two weeks or is it three weeks? By January 7th? And hopefully we'll have tons of people there for our zoning ordinance, um, public hearing as well, so.
Well, thank you for your consideration and, uh, do you have the plans that are marked and read the, the recent license and with all this, with all the revisions that you asked for?
Um, I'm assuming that's what we got, Jules?
Yeah, yes, I have them.
Okay, so those, those are added because of your meeting, of the last meeting when you wanted these additional items, which I did do. And I wanted to make sure you could see, they're all in red on mine. Are they in red on yours?
Yeah. Yes, you sent me a scan. Um, so, and I can print out 11 by 17s, but I can't really print out the big full-size ones.
Why don't I get to?
Maybe you don't.
We need full size for the, we need full size for the approval, right?
Pardon?
Yeah.
That's, that's what gets recorded are the full-size plans, so, um, so is there any way we can get the full-size plans up here?
Oh, sure. That's what I was mentioning. I, I'll get, how many sets do you want? I'll get, what, three sets in color?
I think, whatever, I mean, it's whatever's required if we're going to make an approval based on what is existing. We don't need you to make any changes.
There's four, there's four sheets to the set. And all, all of the items that you've asked for are in red from the last meeting. And I can, how many sets do you want? There's four sheets to a set.
So.
You're going to put them up on the wall?
We only need one for us to look at them before the next meeting because we're going to go in one at a time to look at them. But for an approval, there's, I, I don't remember how, I don't know how many. I know I signed like five copies per, is it just one?
Well, this is.
I signed so many copies every time.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's after, I think, the approval or subdivision.
I was going to say, at the final approval, which is probably next year into April or May, if it's, if it so be it, but I still have to go through all of the, uh, state and local federal guidelines and meet with them each one and get an approval from each one. And in the end, you will get my lodge, which you can record at the registry of deed. These are all just paper prints for now.
We don't, once you get your approval from us, you don't come back to us, so.
They don't? Well, what if, what if they made some changes?
If you need.
They make changes, yes.
So I, we don't do the my lodge, so we've cleared everything and then you, you would approve it and sign it. I don't know how you do it, but that's how most of the towns do it. Because you, I could, you could record this if I make a my lodge, which is easy. They do a wash off my lodge and you could record it. But if I say the DES says no, we want this, this and this, so I had to change the plan. I gotta come back to you again.
Phil, you were going to say something?
No, I was just.
If you say approve subject to all that, I have to get all that before you approve the plan.
So I, I guess my, my only concern is that if, if there are substantial changes to the plan, we would need an updated copy and we would have to consider if it requires renoting, depending on the, on the severity of the changes, that's all.
So.
We, we can approve the plan that's in front of us, but if it changes, I would think we would be.
My years on the board, the only time we've seen an app, after we approve an application, the only time I've seen an applicant come back is for substantial changes to the plan. So we're usually not seeing an applicant coming in, getting a concept approval. We don't approve concepts, we approve the plans. The, uh, the pending, the condition is that DES is going to, you know, the pending, um, permits that are required based on the plans that you have. So you need to have those permits, but we don't, we don't do another approval after this. The approval you get from us is the approval.
Okay, I'm happy with that. I'll, I'll get these up to you. How many sets of prints do you want to see to put up till the meeting is what, uh, January 7th?
Just one, great. Just one copy, please.
Okay, you want one set?
I believe that even though there's a time limit by which we are obligated to issue a decision, I don't think there's anything that prohibits Mr. Carter from requesting an extension. So if, if you would like to, um, ask us to continue the hearing until you have the permits, then we, we could keep this as an active site plan review until you have your final permits from all of the, the state and federal required ones. And then if there are changes, then we're still in hearing. We would not need to notice the hearing as a new hearing. But it would take your request to continue it for that. If, if we don't get that request, we, we're obligated to make a decision within the time period. And we can approve it, but it would also require that you reapply if there are substantial changes as a result of the permitting process.
No, I'd be fine with a decision by, on a meeting of December 7th.
January, yeah.
I mean, January 7th, excuse me.
Okay.
I'll get these up to, if the weather's permitting, I'll be up tomorrow with, with the set.
Okay.
All right, and so board members will just all, like I said before, try and get in there at some point and review the plans, um, right?
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. We will talk to you on January 7th then, Mr. Carter.
Well, thank you very much for the time you spent with me tonight. Have a good evening. Oh, by the way, how much snow do you have up there? We have two feet down here.
I don't know, like 18 inches?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good night.
Good night.
All right. Okay. All righty, so zoning, um, I think, oh, let's do the minutes first. We have the minutes from our last meeting on December 3rd. Did everyone get a chance to review those minutes? Any edits, comments, corrections, motions?
I make the motion we accept the meeting minutes from December 3rd.
Okay.
A second.
All right. Um, no, any further discussion? I will read the roll. Um, Carl?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mark?
Technically, I need to abstain, right? I wasn't here. Yeah.
Phil?
Aye.
Okay, and I for me, Rebecca. All right, minutes are approved. All right, so let's talk zoning. We've got to get the language to the attorney. He would like to see it. Does, do you know when he wants to see it, Jules?
Um, let's see, uh, email. He sent me a template to, to send out sample, to send out to the, to all the property owners around Tenny Mountain Highway. And and then he just, uh, I didn't get a whole lot of guidance about the language itself.
Okay, I just want to make sure he's got time to, you know, we've only got a couple of weeks before putting this to hearing, um, so.
Yeah, we've been talking and he's aware.
All right, good. All right, awesome. So, um, we should be by tonight, we should be able to finalize at least the changes so we can get those to him. I think a lot of the other stuff we need to work on is more of our sort of, our campaign to get this pushed through. So Phil, Mary Ann and I were all at the, um, at the Economic Development, Economic Committee, um, yesterday. I think the biggest thing that I heard from there is that there's potential for septic in the, um, the sort of quadrant of land southwest of the traffic circle, which we're all, we, we're continuing that as rural, in the rural district, which will have a minimum of three acres. So that, you know, that's something, and also the idea that it's not easy to get a septic line across Tenny Mountain Highway. So the idea is that more of the development, and I'd like to see more of that development on the south side of Tenny Mountain Highway as well, because of the closeness to the river, but, um, but the, like Mr. Carter was dealing with, that septic, um, it's going to be more likely to be septic unless we're looking at really big developments because there is a fairly good sized burden on developers to get the sewer line and the water line to, to the connection.
The highway.
Yeah, under, and, yeah, to the connection under the highway. Phil, anything that you took from that meeting that we should be making any changes to?
You know, I, I, I was a little surprised by the plans for the sewer department, but I, I shouldn't be surprised in that, you know, I'm not new to, I'm not, I'm fairly new to town and didn't realize that was part of the plan. But, you know, I think there is good forethought in terms of putting in development in that area or, or, you know, the ability to put some housing in there. And this, the sewer capacity would be a, an asset in terms of development. But, um, you know, I, I really don't see our proposed change to zoning as being an impediment if someone were to choose a, a development in that area. You know, they still have the option to do, um, a cluster or open space development in that area, which, you know, they, they could still have some density and some open space, which would still benefit them. You know, you could still have a, a number of smaller residential lots on a parent parcel that has some open space that would still benefit from, you know, the, the having sewer in the area. So I don't see that as being a, a problem, but, you know, it was, it was nice, nice to get some feedback from the people that were on the committee. And I thought, I thought the meeting went well. Appreciated the invitation.
Yep. That was good. Um, yeah, I mean, you might be relatively new to town, but you're also on the planning board. I hadn't, I hadn't seen that that was in that area that they were looking at as a good place for, you know, for expanded sewer, so. Yeah, but it is, you know, our water and sewer is its own independent entity, so. Yeah.
I think that they would also look to the master plan for guidance on things like that as well.
Yeah. Mary Ann, any takeaways from, for you from that meeting as far as things that we should be applying to our zoning changes?
Uh, no, I didn't, I didn't think anything we were proposing, um, you know, caused any conflict. Um, I was interested in the co-op layout. That was, uh, that was pretty interesting, the whole mapping and what they were, um, their forethought and things as well. So, no, I thought it was a good meeting. It's always helpful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I agree.
Good. Um, all right. So, um, another thing on my list is, I know, uh, so the
Hey buddy.
Subcommittee, the zoning subcommittee met, um, was it last, I think it was last week. Um, and so some of these suggestions are just things we talked about, but, um, I know that Phil and Steve went to talk to the select board about, about the zoning changes and the reception was good. Mary Ann, anything that we should do? And I can't remember if, when we actually go to get to, for the ballot, if it actually will say on the ballot, like the select board approves this or recommends this for passage or something like that, like it does on the, the warrant?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, honestly. Having never gone through it, I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, is there anything, or if you could, um, sorry, Jules, did you have an answer to that?
I have a couple of questions in draft for Attorney Radigan. That's one of them is.
Okay, all right. Um, but if we can get the stamp of approval from the select board on that, we would love it. Um, Mary, is that something you can bring to the select board and just, um, or is there, and if there's anything else that we can do, um?
I don't think so. That's, uh, that's certainly an easy thing to do.
Okay, just let us know, because we have some time, you know, we're a little crunched just to get this noticed and ready to go for the meeting on the 7th, but we have some time. Um, I don't expect us to get a lot of people at the public hearing on the 7th. I would love to be surprised by that. Uh, um, I think we've got, um, most of our work is gonna be leading up to the election itself, so.
Any additional thoughts on how to get the community involved?
Yes, in fact, I have some ideas.
I was leading into that.
Yeah. Uh, so, um, well, Jules had the, um, the poster, the draft poster that we talked, was that the last? Time is, I feel like my mind is in a time warp right now and I can't remember if this was like last week or like three months ago that we talked about this. Um, but Jules has a poster to put up. Um, we're also working on the website. Jules, did you get my, um, the language suggestion, the giant paragraph that I sent you?
Um, I don't think so, man.
I'll make sure I didn't put it in a draft. Um, um, let's see. I, I ran something by Steve. Um, I took it mostly out of the letter to the editor I wrote a couple of months ago. Um, sorry, if I don't write things down, like as I'm thinking about them, they'll never get done.
Oh, okay.
So I've got some language suggestions. I think that would be a good cover page for, you know, when people go, I, I wanna know more about this zoning stuff. It's like either check out this website or here, let's send you this packet with the FAQ. How many people were able to edit the FAQ or look at the FAQ to for editing?
Anybody try?
I, I looked at it. I didn't get to it. Yeah, okay.
I, yeah, I tried to make it. I think you have to have a, maybe have a Gmail account. I tried to bet as many people as I could on there.
Can this just not be like anyone with a link can view type of thing?
Oh, you want it private or?
No, I don't want it private. Because it's a shared document. Yeah, I think it needs to be open to the public.
Yeah, it's wide open, uh, but only you folks can edit it.
Gotcha. Okay, that's the, I gotcha. All right, that makes sense. Um.
And I, I have your, is this your paragraph? Our local land use regulations zoning site plan for the town of Plymouth? That one? That's.
I, I, yeah, I'm not sure. I don't, whatever I sent to you, we had some back and forth emails. I think I said it was Wednesday.
Um, do you, I wasn't sure where you wanted that.
That was what I thought.
Page.
Yeah, it should be on the front page of the, wherever we're having our, you know, proposed zoning changes. I think that information needs to lead. Um, so. Yeah, and I'd be curious. I have trouble sometimes getting to the maps, um, and sometimes the maps don't have the zoning turn, the existing zoning turned on. Um, so I'm not sure if it makes sense to have some screenshots. It'd be like, you can't read this. Check out, here's these images you can look at, just with some stills, um, because I think that the GIS component might be a challenge to some folks, so.
True. Yeah, the zoning, uh, you can turn on and off.
Right.
Person, but unless they know that, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be easier just to take some screenshots and put that on there to then to explain to someone how to like add a layer and zoom in and, and stuff like that. Um, so, yeah, so, um, I think getting everybody to look at, um, the website, and I think the website's just gonna be, it's gonna have the FAQ, it's gonna have the, um, the new description of each zone as well as the comparison of what it, what it is now and what it will be. Um, so I think it would be great if, um, in addition to going to look at the full-size plans at the town hall, if everyone could read through that information and just, um, make edits as they see fit, um, except to the, the um, no edits, maybe we shut down the edit access, Jules, to the, the ones that have the actual like dimension standards and things like that, just so what we're presenting is what we're actually trying to change. But the FAQ and any, just, you know, the website, any, and any other suggestions that folks have, um, for that packet of information, whether it's website or printed packet. And the other thing we talked about is, um, as we get closer to the election, to reach out to the community, to folks that, um, folks that we know, specifically folks that are in affected zones and particularly folks that might not be on board with this change and just start reaching out. If we could each take 10 people and make 10 phone calls in the month of February, um, I think we might make great strides if we're identifying who those people are. Um, yeah, so, um, I think we could maybe look at that in January and just make sure, so if you know people in any of the affected zones, um, I think it'd just be nice to get some outreach. It might be nice to, you know, for somebody to reach out to Tenny Mountain, um, as, you know, they know they've got some development ideas there, um, any residents that are in areas that might be affected, so. Yeah. All right.
Rebecca, that was, so, uh, we have to look at the plans for Mr. Carter, look at the frequently asked questions and help try to answer those as best we can. And then look to maybe contact some local folks that are in potentially affected areas and just try to inform them.
Yeah, I think, come up with, start thinking about people. I think we'll, we'll talk about that more January 7th or the 21st. Um, um, I, you know, be great if people came to the public hearing. I don't think we're gonna, I, I'm not that interested in calling people about zoning changes, you know, on December 27th, so, um.
About the 25th.
Yeah, Merry Christmas and let's, let's talk about zoning. The greatest gift you can give Plymouth. Um, so, um, yeah, we'll, uh, but I think just reaching out before, I think the, we can, we can try and get people to come to the hearings. I think no matter what, we're gonna run two, two hearings, so let's, let's see how the reception is on January 7th and then just determine if we wanna try and pull more people in or we wanna focus our efforts, as I, I'm kind of inclined to focus our efforts more on the election um, itself, so.
And one final last question for me. When you say website, you're talking about the town of Plymouth home website, not a separate entity that we're creating for this project, correct?
Right, Jules has made a sort of nested page. It's like the zoning proposal and, um, yeah.
Okay.
So that's the site where we'll send people for more information. Um, but we'll also have a, like, a printed version, because I think we are gonna get a lot of people that aren't gonna look at that, so if they want a printed version, we can provide that too.
Does anyone not have the password for that? It's password protected. I can send it to you.
Yeah, I don't, I need that.
Oh, you don't have it? Okay.
The other day.
Yeah, I needed to.
All right, I'll send it out now. It's very simple.
It's so simple that I thought it was something else that was equally simple, but totally different. But it's looking good and I think, yeah, once we get our, everything finalized, we'll shut down the edit access and then, um, and then we'll be good, so. My, I have a couple comments, um, on our table of uses, um, for the new zones. We have a lot of back and forth about the 35-foot height and I'm pretty sure currently everywhere in town is 35-foot height. So.
Even in the institutional, civic and institutional?
I think everywhere in town, but because the only buildings that go above 35 are Plymouth State, so they can, they get to they, they want, yeah.
And it's pretty easy to get a variance if you really wanna build a taller one.
Yeah, and it's, it's usually habitable space, I think, is what it is. Um, so I think we can pull the 35-foot height because it's not a change. I think it's consistent. It's 35 everywhere, so.
That makes sense.
Maybe remove that?
I can do it. I just wanted to make sure the, the rest of the board. I didn't wanna change anything of that significance. I think I moved some stuff around. We already, we decided, um, the rural zone, right? Oh, do we, or do we not talk about that as a board? Do we just talk about it as a committee?
Yeah, I think that might be something.
Yep. Um, okay, so is everyone good with the, just, we'll remove 35 foot as a change because it's not, it's not actively a change?
That makes sense.
The other thing is, we discussed in the committee that maybe we would just call the rural residential open space zone or whatever we, names we've tossed around, just call it the rural district.
Much easier.
Yep. We will continue with a Tenny Mountain mud district, but the mixed use. But, um, but we'll, we'll simplify the rural to just rural, so.
Do you wanna call it sticks?
Yeah. Yep.
Worth discussing.
I, I think that'd be great. Um, pretty standard, yeah. But again, I think we just see again and again the comment we had from, uh, Nate from Longview that, you know, this zone is agricultural. Trying to move away from definitional names. Um, rural is kind of doing that, but I, to me, it's just a little more vague that, um, it's not conveying use as much as intention, so. Does that work for folks?
Is everybody okay with Gateway District? Cause that's the other change that is new in this. I think we had proposed that early and we've been using it as a working name, but if anybody feels like there's a better candidate, this would be the, the ideal time to change it.
This reminded me, Phil, Gateway is really the entryway from the highway into town and not out Tenny, or is that the Tenny part too?
Um, it's not Tenny Mountain Highway. It's basically the three main routes into town. Like coming up from Ashland on Route 3, coming south from, into Plymouth from Campton or coming up from Bristol on 3A.
Okay.
Those areas, or, or, or in from the west, uh, from Romney.
Yeah.
Circle, like, it's kind of my, my vision that it's kind of transitional commercial. Um, it's, it's kind of the first thing that people see when you drive into town on any of the major thoroughfares and it's probably not a bad place to locate a business outside of the Tenny Mountain Highway area.
And we have called it, yeah, so north of the, uh, village commercial, we have the highway commercial, which is the area between downtown and the Campton town line. Um, and so that would become the gateway or whatever we're calling it. The thing I like about Gateway is it's not definitional, it's locational more than anything else. Um, so, um, I, yeah.
No, it's fine. I think it's good.
It's one zone, but it's three locations.
Right. Yeah.
That's what I was, I, I, that's what I was trying to figure out. I couldn't quite remember, so, but, thank you.
That's great. I'm glad, glad you asked.
I think most folks are gonna want, um, uh, definitional. Um, that's not the right word, but, you know, they know what agricultural means. Um, I think rural's a better name, but I think Gateway, they'll struggle, even new term for them. I don't think there's much we can do about it. Um, but these certainly gonna be new terms. Not that they know the old terms for that.
Right, right. I think what we've done though, by creating the, um, the intention and the vision behind each district that, um, we've got a definitional paragraph that is a little easier to get through than, you know, trying to read uses, use tables and things like that, so. The idea behind those descriptions are describing what, what we envision and, you know, that ties directly into the master plan, so, um, I think our next step would be to really absorb those as a board so that when we speak of these zones, we kind of can rattle off what exactly that means, because, you know, you say agricultural and really you, you know, I'll say it, I keep saying it, Market Basket is an agricultural zone. It doesn't necessarily exclude any, any really many uses at all. Um, and it's really, it could be called like, you know, anything really, so. Could, yeah.
Wild West.
Yeah. Yeah, it could be called that. Did someone wanna change it to that?
For, for, just for discussion's sake, you know, we, we could easily stick with highway commercial and all three zones that we're proposing to, you know, could all be called highway commercial. You know, they're all technically on state highways.
Yeah.
Um, my, in my thinking that, I think Gateway District is, is more welcoming for somebody with property there that's thinking of, of a, you know, of putting in a, you know, think, think of like the, the Italian farmhouse or some, you know, something along those lines, you know, that's, that's the type of thing that would do well in those zones and I, I think we can encourage more of that type of development there.
Yeah. Right.
I, 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 I agree with the term gateway. Um, it's, it's a very welcoming term and it's a term you see used more and more often lately anyway. Um, and to kind of jump on that would be, I think, a good term.
I like that it is also, you know, highway commercial, if we were to zone everything highway commercial, we've got a lot of residential that's happening there as well, so, um, it really is, it is probably our most mixed-use district, um, with the exception of the agricultural zone currently. Um, but it is, there is a lot of mixed use there. Um, but, you know, instead of creating another mud district, um, you know, I, I, I like Gateway, so. So are we good, are we good with all the zone names then? Gateway, rural and Tenny Mountain Highway mixed use?
That one's a mouthful, but.
It is a mouthful. But it, I like that it has Tenny Mountain in the name because we can, when we talk about the Tenny Mountain Zone, we'll know, we'll know what we're talking about, so. Okay.
Do you, do you need a motion to move forward with those names as, as official or are we, are we just in consensus? Is that sufficient?
I think maybe, I'm wondering, has everyone looked at the, the table of uses, this sort of zoning summary sheets recently enough to make a motion to approve everything?
Yep.
So I, I, I think maybe just for posterity, we can make a motion to move forward and put this to a public hearing, um, for the zoning changes? That work?
I, I'm, I'm gonna refrain from making the motion only because I feel like I'm, as a member of the committee, it should come, uh, a member at large.
I agree, and, um, yeah.
Make the motion then.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Yay, John. Um, I, so there is a motion on the table to move forward with our zoning changes. Um, any uh, further discussion? I will read the roll. Carl.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
And Rebecca, hi. All right.
I'm sure Steve would if he were seated.
Um, yeah, I did forget. Steve's an alternate, so I don't have to excuse him for the evening, so Steve was unable to make it tonight. Um, all right, so we're gonna go forward, um. Jules, will you let me know if there's anything else you need as far as information for, um, Attorney Radigan? Um, and otherwise, um, we'll look for a bustling crowd on our January 7th meeting. This is pretty exciting, that, I mean, this is a lot of work that we've put forth in the past couple of years, so. Thank you, everyone, for your help with that. Um.
Thanks for leading us up on this, Rebecca. I think it's, your, your leadership has, has really pushed it along and, and kept both Steve and I involved in it. and, and kept both Steve and I involved in this, so thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so homework over the holidays. Um, review, get in to review the plan, read the FAQs and review all the material. Um, and then just start thinking about who we need to reach out to, um, to, to help, uh, to help sway, sway the public and, um, and, uh, uh, make our case for these changes, so. All right. Is there anything else on the agenda that I missed?
What's adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Um, I heard Phil make a motion to adjourn quick, first and quickly.
I'll second.
Um, oh, and before we take the roll or have any discussion, thanks, Jules, for all the back of the background work you've done on this too, so.
Yes.
There's a lot of material that you've been, uh, churning through this, so, thank you. Um, okay, so there's a motion on the table, any further discussion about, uh, adjourning? All right, I will read the roll. Carl.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Phil.
No.
And an aye for me. Um, all right, thanks everyone. Have a good holiday and see you next year.